So to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Justice Chongley.
Yeah.
Justice Marcy.
Yeah.
Justice Connor.
Here.
Justice Hertzler.
Here.
Mayor Repetrich.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11th, 2022 meeting?
A moment.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I motion to approve the July 21st, 2022 meeting.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Since we have no one here tonight, we'll dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. Oh, I'm sorry, just need to hear. Chris did leave his report, I just put it out on the table for you. I know no one's really had a chance to read it, so I'll just give you that until it get over. He's been really, really busy. Any questions?
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
Complaint of foul on prospect speaking.
Yeah, they're.
Do we have chickens again?
Yeah, I believe so, that's what I heard. Nikki lives on Prospect, maybe she knows more about it without any details.
Okay. They're not always out visible?
Okay. Because we went through this a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we don't allow chickens in, chickens in the village, people to raise chickens.
Don't allow farm animals in the village.
Right.
Okay. Um, so do we know, is he visiting the property to?
Well, it says he attempted to speak to the tenant, so I don't know if he had to go back, if he's actually been able to reach that person or not.
Okay.
So I, but I can definitely ask him. I'll let you know.
Yeah, and I don't want to see that escalate to the point that it did last time.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. I will, I will ask him.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would just say to Chris to keep up the good work.
Absolutely.
Very, very busy and running between the town and Shazie and the village. Somehow managed, manages to keep it together. Alright, so here's my report. Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting. We've had a number of water main breaks this summer, which have been hard on the DPW crew and the affected residents. I thank the employees for their hard work and the residents for their patience. We are still working on a water line replacement project, which should start in the fall or early 2023. The other ongoing project is the upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. The actual work on that will be starting in a few weeks. We continue to offer several activities in the village. We are continuing to offer several activities in the village this summer. The turnout for the Taylorville Valley Concert was outstanding. On August 10th, which is this Wednesday, the Straw Hatters will perform. And on August 19th, Busco Bandits will play. Our annual Village Fest is back after a two-year hiatus due to COVID restrictions. We will have a free ice cream for all as well as a bounce house.
Wow, more than a fire truck.
Ooh, that scared me.
Me too.
That's, that's a ringtone.
But ringtone was church bells. We'll have free ice cream for all, as well as a bounce house and other activities for the children. This will take place on August 13th from noon until 3:00 in Bill Earl Park. I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. And finally, you may have heard about the Poutine Challenge, which has been organized by the Village of Champlain and the Village of Rouse's Point and the Town of Champlain. This is a fun way to invite people to come to local restaurants to sample poutine, which if you haven't had it, is french fries, cheese curds, and gravy. It's mighty delicious. You can pick up a passport at one of the participating restaurants and have it stamped and turn it into the town. And the first 20 will receive a T-shirt and everyone will get a certificate. This will go through Labor Day. I've had several of you reach out to me recently with concerns and suggestions. I sincerely thank you for taking the time to email or call. I'm always willing to listen to your ideas and work together to improve life in the Village of Champlain. There has been an increased interest in redevelop, redeveloping properties and opening small businesses, which I think is really awesome. This investment is good for all of us and I plan on continuing to promote the village as a good place to live and work. May you enjoy the last month of summer with family, friends, and neighbors. See you around. Okay, reports from the trustees, Joel?
Um, okay, so I spoke to a constituent and she had expressed interest in a cornhole tournament. So we worked through the logistics of how we wanted to do it and pretty sure we've got a format of how we want to do it. It's just gonna be free entry for whoever wants to play. We'll do one set of singles, so just one person on a team playing against another person. And then a group game, so it's like two sets of, of games. And the only thing we were to think about is when the best day would be to do it. So I guess I would open it up to you guys, when you guys have been around more engaged as far as like planning goes with dates. The date that I was thinking was the end of August, I think it's the 27th. This is like, uh, just two weeks after Village Fest.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, obviously I think weekend. I mean, I, I don't even know what, does it necessarily have to be a weekend thing? I mean, I think people would play cornhole for like a night, a nighttime thing or like an afternoon type thing. I'm not really quite sure. I think preferably weekend would be good, but I don't think it has to be a weekend. So that's kind of the thought process of when we could do it, you know?
I was thinking, well, that's the last weekend before kids go back. Well, pretty much before kids go back to school. A lot of people might be out of town that week, that weekend or planning.
It's the week before Labor Day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Before Labor Day weekend.
So.
Yeah. So maybe after Labor Day weekend?
We can even do.
Let me just, yeah, I'm just throwing it out.
No, any, uh, yeah. School starts when, like around the, okay, so the beginning of September. Yeah, so I mean, this like cornhole, I don't know if you guys have ever played, but you know, you could have a, a three-year-old playing with a, a 93-year-old. So it's like, you know, that's kind of what we want to try and get, is trying to get as many, you know, different age people to do all kinds of different stuff and try and get, um, you know, we could get a food truck or something. We could contact the new ice cream place and see if they want to bring some. Or the shake shop, and maybe they want to bring out some, some goodies and stuff like that people can buy if they want to.
Remember we thought about, we talked about doing something in the fall?
Mm-hmm. Like a little, yeah, like kind of like a fall fest type thing.
Oh, yeah, that's, that would be great. We could do like.
Yeah, we could combine it with maybe some other.
Can you do apple bobbing anymore?
Some other.
Oh, I don't know.
No.
Those same apple would probably not apple bobbing.
Yeah.
But we can have other kinds of little relays, you know? I would, I think youth soccer is usually on Saturday mornings.
Yes.
Okay.
Once school starts, so I wouldn't do anything like that on a Saturday morning.
No, it would have to be more Sunday.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
They may go back to tournaments. The last two years they haven't done the soccer tournaments and that's where area teams get together. Moores, uh, Shazie holds one, Moores holds one, and Rouse's Point. And those are usually Saturdays. Early September through early October.
So Sunday would be better.
Sunday would be better, yeah.
Okay.
Soccer's starting this week or next week, so I don't know more on that info soon.
I'd recommend September on a Sunday, personally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was leaning towards Labor Day weekend. I remember I said this and I was thinking, you know, I don't know, I don't really play much cornhole. My thought, mindset was like, it's like a summer game, so it's like, kind of want it to be warm out. But I don't think it really has to be.
No, no.
And it's still warm in September.
September's still nice, nice.
Okay. Beautiful. So I'll, I'll get in touch with you and I'll send out an email to everybody letting, when we figure out the day. I'll coordinate her and then there's a Facebook group, there's, there's a lot of cornhole advocates out there. So we're trying, trying to pass along the message. So my mindset, it's all online, like there's a professional official cornhole league and they have like boards, they're like 300, 400 bucks, so I'm not gonna, but we can, what they do is they post all the dimensions of everything online, so you can make pretty much like your own replica. So I can probably put together like, I don't know, two or three sets of them so that we can have, depending on how many people come, we can have a couple of games going on at once and then, you know? So the only thing I would think is like who we could reach out to if we wanted to try and do some sort of like food truck or something like that. So my mind.
If you want to do that, you have to book pretty early.
Okay. Well, like what, what, what sort of things could we do that would be like a, um, not a bonus, but like a.
Attract more people to come.
Yeah, that and like an additional incentive to like make money. Because it's gonna be free entry, so anybody can come and anybody can play. So what's, what's a way that we could, you know, get money for, you know, getting new toss bags for the next year or getting new boxes for the next year so that we can keep them, keep it going and it kind of funds itself? And then we can use it to do other things we have to. Like a 50/50 or like a raffle, that could be all that.
You might be able to get a sponsor or two from local businesses.
Yeah, because I don't know if, if we as a municipality could do that.
You can't, you have to collect money, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what I thought.
But if you could, if you got a sponsor, then.
You can make T-shirts as participants, people that are part of it. Do you have a way of registration or you don't want like 300 people to show up?
Yeah, I was just gonna have like a, you could set up a, like an app on your phone where it's just like, it'll text it to a number and it'll just send someone like a receipt. So like they'll send in like one person or two person and then they'll just get a number back to them. And then when they have their number, they just bring that into the booth and then we put the number on the, the board of where all the people are, for where all the games are, and then we just go and play. So, you know, if there's 100 people or if there's 10, it just, it just fits into whatever the board is. You can do it right on your phone. My mindset was T-shirts are just for like the winners. So like the people, 'cause I, I mean, I just thought my, what I thought was Champlain Cornhole Championship, that seems like it kind of rolls off the tongue and it's, it would be easy to make like a little, you know, three Cs or whatever. But could be whatever.
T-shirts are very expensive.
Yeah.
You could offer them for sale too.
Yeah, we could probably print like.
If you wanted to make a couple bucks on a T-shirt.
So as far as monetizing it, we're not allowed to monetize it? Or does it have to even be an official village event? Like if we don't, if we don't spend any money and we're, we're not, how does that work?
You can run it, you can run it through the, one of the organizations, like the one that, the one that's right here in the village, I think, whatever that's called now. And take it out of, take it out of us being responsible for it, if you want.
Alright. Beautiful. Okay. And then the only other thing was just looking for grant money. I saw there was an email from Comptroller's Office regarding the downtown DRI program, which I know Plasford applied to quite a few years back and got quite a bit of money. This one, I think the one that was coming out was, can't remember when the deadline was, whether it was coming up in the next couple of weeks. But anybody who was interested or had any ideas or wanted to reach out to someone, I think Melissa McManus was a person that came to my mind, of someone that we could reach out to that, you know, even if she wasn't able to look at a grant or write a grant or had anything to do with that, I know that she would be the one to at least point us in a direction that would, um, you know, hopefully lead us to something that would, would be helpful. So, um, again, if anybody's interested or wants to help out or wants to do anything with that, just let me know, because I'm gonna get in touch with her and see what we can do. Because we're gonna have expenses coming up that I think are gonna be difficult to be able to deal with. And just looking forward, there's gonna be a lot of water leaking out of the bucket, I guess. Literally a metaphor, but so, yeah.
So on, on that, on that topic, I, I told Joel that Melissa McManus is interested in working on that DRA grant, but she said that she thought it would be better to have the entire town with both villages involved. That it would be a much stronger application than just a small village trying to get the money. So I said we can reach out to her and talk to her more about that.
Yeah, I think that seems like a great idea.
Yeah.
Just like collective bargaining.
Yeah.
As much as I'm afraid of unions, it's not the easiest thing to do sometimes. But if we can get together, that, that would certainly help everyone. You know, we could, could make a committee with the town and the village if we wanted to. If we could, we could figure it out.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Chuck?
I don't really have much tonight, just, you know, I'll thank the, everybody, especially the village group for doing, doing a good job. I mean, they've been right out straight with, with restrictions that they have on them due to, you know, unforeseen circumstances. You know, things are getting done, but it's a struggle.
It's a struggle and they're extremely tired and morale is not very good right now. They're really worn out. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. So we had one so far of our amazing Champlain Challenge fun runs. We have canceled two due to heat advisories. So we have decided that we will hold the last one of the summer on August 21st at 5:00 with no picnic. And then we will use the, those two runs that we had this summer combined with next year's fun runs and do a end of next summer picnic. And that's when we'll hand out T-shirts and, you know, celebrate the, the children and their accomplishments and running. So our first one, we had 18 participants and again, we had new families join us, so that was nice. Our garden club, the herbs and veggies are huge. I don't know if anyone's been down there, but they're going well.
They're doing very well.
I do need to pick the lettuce. I just saw they're starting to flower, so I need to get that out. So I will be setting up a cooking class where we will use some of the fresh veggies and herbs and have the kids create a dish. I'd like to say thank you to a few community members who have donated items to our garden. We have Keith Boers from Moores who donated mulch and compost. Kim Selis also in Moores has donated stones for edging, so I can create a perennial garden in the back corners. Gary and Brenda Malinsky also just donated today bricks to create a second one. So I'd like to put them two in the back corner of the area, one as perennial garden and one as a pollinator garden. And Bridge Trees, uh, Bridge Tree Service?
Uh, Bridge, Bridge Tree Care.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Well, yeah, so they donate stumps for seeding, so those are few.
Sell those to the.
Good. I'm excited, we can use that as our seeding for the outdoor classroom. I did submit the pollinator garden grant and that should be coming out in the next week or two, letting us know if we received it or not. That's $500 worth and that'll go to purchasing pollinator plants to put in the garden for next year. I do have an event set up on Thursday at 1:00 that we can gather and create our sign introducing and welcoming the community to the children's garden area. So the kids will get together and we'll paint the words, Children's Garden Club Outdoor Classroom. It'll say something like that. So that's it so far for the garden. The library has held a couple workshops so far for their tech classes. And a flyer will be coming out in September with dates and times for a 10, 10-session course on other areas, so iPads, iPhones, and Androids on how to use, use the equipment, how to use the different apps on, on the pad, that tablets or phones or whatever it is that they have. And talking about just how to use the internet, how to use email, how to back up photos and documents. Pretty much anything you want to know on how to use your device, they'll, they'll discuss. So that'll come out soon and I'll share that information when it does. We've held four event, well, we've held two events of four events this summer. The theme for the library is Oceans of Possibilities. We had a rock painting event in July and we had about 18 kids who came by and it was a packed house. The second one we had was Ocean Collage. We only had six, six participants, but that was at the same time that swim class had began, so we didn't have as many as we expected. This Wednesday at 1:00, we have a Fish and Wildlife Inspector coming and she has hands-on items just to show what we have in our area and discuss what her job is at the border. And 17th, August 17th at 1:00, we have a standard event. So there's a few things at the library. Come on down, get your library card if you want to have it. And the Village Fest is this week, like you said, on Saturday. The library will also be there. And JCEO Head Start will also come down. So we'll have a couple of community organizations who will be set up for the table. And that's what happened.
Great, thanks, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for all your hard work. Kim?
Well, you're hard to follow.
I do a lot.
I really don't have, have a lot. The water board is moving along, still trying to gather information. It's always a challenge every year when we start getting ready to get into the meat of it. Remembering that half of it is in one year, half of it's in the next year. And the town's all in one year, so I was just talking with Mary about one of the fires and it was, we were gonna use it for this year, but it's, it has to be taken out now because it happened this year, we can't use it.
Oh, that's true.
We can't use the gallons, so it's always confusing and all the rest of the board does the same thing because, so. We're, we're working on that, we're working on the, the raw cost of water right now. Michael Fontaine works on that, so things are moving and hopefully start working on the report soon.
Great, thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome.
That's, I hope the weather sounds like it's gonna be beautiful this weekend, so good luck with the Village Fest.
Yeah, yeah, it does look like it will be good, fingers crossed.
First of all, do you want to do the resolution for the?
The water tank. Yes, we should do that. Okay, so we need to go to the water tank contract, which we have down at Old Business, but we need to pass that before we can make the payment. There it is. Everyone find it? So it's resolution.
Oh, I got here.
Okay. Alright, so I will read this first. Resolution for approval of the water tank's maintenance contract between the Village of Champlain Village and the Town of Champlain Town. Whereas the Village of Champlain recognizes that the water tank's maintenance contract updates the legal framework for the shared maintenance of the two water tanks supplying the village and town. And whereas the contract is scheduled to be updated every three years. And whereas the town and village, recognizing the benefits and importance of intermunicipal cooperation and resource allocation, agree to this water tank's maintenance contract. And now, be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain does approve and endorse the water tank's maintenance contract as signed by the village mayor and the town supervisor on July 13th, 2022. And be it further resolved that a signed certi, a certified signed copy of this resolution be provided to the town as per section V-3. We have a motion to accept this resolution.
So.
And a second, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So a Lamento will hereby certify that the foregoing is a true copy of the resolution acted upon by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain. Motion carried August 8th, 2022. Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of that. Alright, so on to your report.
Everyone has the July 2020 expense and revenue reports? Any questions?
Yeah. Anyone have any questions?
It's kind of early for.
Yeah, I guess if anything unusual jumps out at you, are there any, any things you wanted to ask about? No? Alright, presentation of the warrant and payment.
We have additional invoices of $8,688.37 for a total of $26,681.81.
We have a motion.
Someone.
And a second.
Second.
Alright, discussion? Any question on any of, any of these invoices?
Stafford, Arm, Owens, and Renee, are those charges all related to the same?
Most of them are one particular code enforcement issue. They're probably, I didn't look at that bill. There are probably a couple of small ones too. I know I had to make a couple of phone calls for them to research. I think most of it is that one, one or two court cases, one in particular.
One of them had to do with reviewing of the, for the wastewater treatment plant facility. Reviewing documents, the agreement.
Oh, that's true. The agreement from the engineers.
Yeah. One of the properties that the person says they do not own.
Oh, yep, that's a different one. Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one has to do with.
The one case that's.
The one case that went to court.
Yeah, that's probably most of it.
What's that?
Tim Ferguson.
Busco Bandits.
Okay, I had a feeling that's probably what it was, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for the upcoming concert.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright, roll call.
Justice Chongley.
Aye.
Justice Marcy.
Aye.
Justice Connor.
Aye.
Justice Hertzler.
Aye.
Mayor Repetrich.
Aye.
We also have some invoices that need to be paid out of the sewer project. Do we want to do them separate or do we want to just do them all together?
Some sewer and some water?
No, they're all sewer.
I think they can be done together if they're all sewer.
I can just tell what they are?
Yeah.
Okay, for the total invoices to come out of the sewer project is $33,542.15. We have $1,635 for bond council, so we had to renew the bond or the band. Bartlett Le Judice, $8,627.5. Triangle, they've already started the project, whether it's, I don't know if they've been down there?
I think they have, but I'm not.
Triangle Electrical, $11,400 and Pipeline Mechanical, $11,886. Triangle Electrical, eleven thousand four hundred, and Pipeline Mechanical, eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents.
All right, so we have a motion to pay that.
Some more.
And a second.
Second.
Waiting for the long-term funding to cover the short-term.
Yeah, we have funding coming in to cover this, but it's slow. Um, any questions? About this? Roll call?
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Walensky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McPetrus.
Aye.
We also have to make an end of fund transfer because we got our ARPA funding.
Oh, yes.
So, we need to, um, to transfer those funds to the water project, which is fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five ninety-eight.
Okay, so we're transferring it to the water fund.
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion. And a second.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion? Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Walensky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McPetrus.
Aye.
Okay, that's it for the financial aspect, too, okay.
That's enough.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for all the work you're doing on all of this, Laniela, keeping this all straight. It's greatly appreciated by all of us. A report from the superintendent. I don't think we have a report, um, but I can tell you that they are, have been extremely busy with flushing and then water main breaks. Um, so I don't know if you're aware, but there were two on Pine, one right down here on Main, and then one after another on Saturday, right around the corner on Main Street. So that's five in about three or four days. Um, and you know how hot it was.
Oh, yeah.
It was brutal. Um, we did, uh, Mike was on vacation, Mike Joliker, um, we did Colin Rouse's point for assistance. Um, they were excellent, excellent. And they came, they came right over, along with our guys. Everyone worked very well together and they reinforced several times that they're, they're to help us and we, to help them, it should go both ways and they're very happy to do that.
That's awesome.
So it was a, it was a really good cooperative effort, but unfortunate that we're there. Well, the first call came in about one in the morning, 'cause I got a call also. Um, and then they worked until two-thirty in the afternoon on those two legs.
One-thirty, twelve hours.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, correspondence?
FOIL request from Doug Powers. Dangerous dog notices from Champlain Town Court. Correspondence from Attorney Renee to Daniel La Barre regarding one-one-one-nine-one Route nine. Letter of resignation from Woody Kissel. CHIC's funding balances. Correspondence from New York State Office of the Attorney General regarding statement of account due for petroleum cleanup.
All right. And under new business, um, first, um, I would like to officially appoint Mary Ellen Boyd, who lives on Loop nine here in the village, to, um, the zoning board of appeals. She's very excited to serve the village, they've lived here quite a while now, she's got a young family. And, uh, so I thank her for, for joining the ZDA. Um, next is the sale and subdivision of land on Maiden Lane, we've discussed this before. Um, I asked the person who's interested in purchasing this from the village to, um, send us a letter, which he did, I think you should all have that. Give me a second so I can find it. All right, there it is. Uh, we, um, it will basically be, um, about eighty-nine feet by thirty-eight. So if you, you've got the little map there, but it's, uh, will be behind Antles Building. And he said thirty-eight feet wide out to Maiden Lane. And that'll be a, a better driveway, a better, safer driveway for his tenants. Um, so we, I, we need to decide to sell this, first of all. Uh, we have not set a price. Um, I don't really know how you want to do that. Um, but I think we can make a motion to sell it at whatever price is, uh, can be determined. I think there's gonna be a little give and take on that, but the first motion would be to sell this small piece of land.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we sell that piece of property to the individual.
Mike Tibby.
Mike Tibby.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on that?
Okay, as far as price, I mean, we, we certainly have to cover all our costs, 'cause I'm sure it needs a pretty, are you surveyed?
Um, I don't know if we're going to have to have it surveyed or not, um, just because it's such a small piece. Uh, we'll, we'll have some legal fees though, for sure.
Certainly, yeah.
Um, so our costs would have to be covered, and then I would assume we would get a little bit for it, I mean, we sold another piece earlier this year, or last year, a small piece for a thousand dollars.
Right, yep.
These pieces are all, are all of these owned by the village? These ten-point-one, ten-point-two, are these all village-owned?
Uh, yeah.
It's all around the playground.
Okay, just making sure that we, that everything other than what's on that site is all village.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're cutting off a sliver of that one, and then everything else around it is the, the playground. It's where we've been planting the trees on the perimeter of Maiden Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that all belongs to the village.
Is there, uh, any idea of an assessment or anything about?
There's an assessment on that, um, oh, Mary, we looked that up and I don't remember it.
Was it thirty-four, thirty-four hundred, something like that? Is it not that much?
No, I think it was.
Yeah, 'cause we were trying to figure out how we.
We were trying to figure out how we would do that, but honestly, it's not, it's not land we're really going to be using.
No, 'cause it's all part of the garage.
It's ro- it's very close to the garage.
It's, yeah, it's not close to the playground or the garden.
No, it's not useful, it's not, yeah, it's not really useful land, there's one tree on there that I think can be saved.
It'd be useful, yeah.
It's a little off to the side. So, um.
Would it have to be zoned through, I mean, no?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
There's nothing being built, trust me.
Nothing's being built.
And water be, has to be able to run through it.
The water has to be able to pass through it, so it cannot be paved.
So it would be a gravel.
A gravel driveway.
Yeah.
And, and the person who wants to buy it is aware of that.
Bless you.
Bless you. Um, do you want me to talk to the, to, to the purchaser and see what he's thinking? We know we have to have our legal fees covered and probably make a little bit of money off village property.
Do they, do they own the, the, what is now the driveway along the side of the building that goes back to there?
Yes.
Yes. But with that store opening, it's likely that, that maybe.
Well, could we, could we propose a, a swap or a trade?
I don't think we need that.
Okay.
I don't think that, I don't think that's very useful to us. It could be a parking area for the owner of that new business.
Right there on the side next to the playground?
No, not that one, on the other side is where they pull in now, between Antles and the old Napa, that's where they pull in now.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
The building and the basketball court, right? Because that's where I was thinking it might be wrong.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, my mindset is, you know, right now, we can't think of something that it might be used for, but in ten, twenty, thirty, however many years that it might be, then there might be something that we might be kicking ourselves in the butt.
Well, there's actually really nothing you can, there's nothing you can build there, there's nothing you can do with it. Can't put anything permanent on there, anything that, you know, can't build, it's just.
Because it's a FEMA buyout.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those restrictions are so tight that you can't really put much all on it. Yeah, and it's only a thirty-nine or thirty-eight foot swath anyway, so we're not losing too much. Well, I can, I can talk to the purchaser and see what he's thinking, but I don't know how the board feels. You want me to just bring that back to you? We don't have to decide that right this minute. The reason we need the motion is because we have to apply to our own planning board to subdivide the land. And I wanna get that ball going.
Yeah.
Okay. Do, do we vote?
Yeah.
I didn't think so, I just voted.
We have a motion.
All right, so there's a motion there, all right, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, I will reach out to him and then we'll start the planning board process. Thank you. Uh, bill for remediation from the New York State Attorney General. Well, this caused a big shock. I'm sure you, I'm sure you all read that and said, what?
Yep.
Yeah.
Several ones.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just to give a little bit of background, in case the public is, is listening to this. Um, in twenty-seventeen, near the end of twenty-seventeen, um, when we started talking about maybe some changes to this building, one of our concerns was that there's, was a very heavy odor of some kind of gas or petroleum. So, we, um, we hired some people to come in and, and, and do some exploration and, in fact, um, parts were contaminated, contacted DEC, worked with a man at DEC, who, uh, they set up an entire plan of how to remedy, and it took about four years before it was done, and the odors are much diminished, I would say.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it did come to a cost of over to almost two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. We were told that that came out of a fund specifically for.
For spills.
Yeah, for spills. Um, there was never any talk of repaying that, so this to me was, I, I just couldn't believe it. Um, so we have done a couple of things. Uh, we did contact our insurance company to see if maybe it might be covered under some kind of insurance, but we had a different carrier at the time, so we're still going to follow up on that. But the other thing I did was I called the man who wrote this letter, um, Mr. Costa. And he explained to me that, um, he is actually working with us, not against us. He is, is, he, he works with the municipalities to try to make this work so that we don't necessarily have to pay for this. The first thing he did was, he said, ignore the month deadline of pain. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that right now. The next thing he asked was, could we find a photograph that shows that it truly was a gas station with a specific, um, company? And Mary found that in a, about, honestly, it seemed like you found that in five minutes. I don't know how you.
I picked the right box, actually.
She picked the right, we, we knew we had that one.
Yeah, it was, that's why I looked up at the wall right away, like.
We knew we had that one, but it's a little blurry and you can't read the signs very well, but she found another one that is extremely clear and it's textile. So I sent that to Mr. Costa right away, he said thank you, and he said that he will proceed and he will keep us informed, so they're, they're looking for someone to cover some of these costs that come out of this fund. He really allayed my fears, I'll stay in touch with him, but right now, I don't feel like they're going to come running after us for this large sum of money.
They're gonna shut us down?
They're not going to shut us down, he was very, he, he, he was, he was very kind. You could tell I was, I was nervous. He said, don't lose any sleep over this, we are working with you, we are working for you. I said, okay.
Yeah, because when all that started, I mean, there was, we knew it needed to be done, but nobody.
Didn't they have issues years ago that they, they had to vent the front?
Yes.
Was this part of the same thing or something different?
Well, it probably was all part of this, the, the petroleum that was domped for years, but wasn't that in ninety-one?
Ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one, they also did some work here.
Yeah, so why, why did it reoccur or they never clean?
It really wasn't completely, it was still in the ground, it was still in the ground.
It was still in the ground.
Why? Why wasn't it done right the first time?
I don't think they knew how extensive it was.
Oh, okay.
I think they removed the tank, but they didn't remove all the contamination that was going on.
Okay.
Based on, like, all the old minutes and notes that are back then.
Yeah, and I think we have, we just have technology that allows us to understand it better and to go further. And that blower is, you know, it really does the job, that blower out back. So that's where we are in that. So, and I will keep you posted, I just intend on calling him like every other week.
Could, um, could we reach out to, to Stafford and Owens again and maybe forward this to them? I don't know whether or not we're like, I don't know if we have like a retainer or any sort of agreement with them, just to be able to send this to them so they see it? And then we can have an idea of what we, what sort of information we can gather to be able to send to the state to be like, hey, you know, this isn't our gas station, you know, sure, yes, this was a gas station that was in the village, but.
Well, we found all the emails that we went back and forth, you know, that explained all of this to them, so I don't know where, how else we could. Well, when I first started about the oil spill to that Ashley, was that?
Yeah, Ashley, yeah.
Yeah, that was from the controller's office.
Yeah, was that? Yeah, was that, 'cause this, that's how it all came about, about this oil spill fund. And I explained to her that, you know, we were in this garage and this gas station was here years before we even took it, so she knew all, they, they knew all of that, 'cause it had been explained to them.
So, um, I, I agree with your point, and actually, the first thing I wrote down was, in my notes, contact lawyer. But after I talked to Mr. Costa, I decided I should wait, partially because of the cost of using our lawyer in advance of maybe not needing him.
Mm-hmm.
So I think I'm just going to wait and see what we find out about it, and then, um, I have not sent, um, Mr. Merdine the letter yet, but I will if, if I feel like we're not gonna be able to get this taken care of by the AG's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Any other questions about that? Okay, deep breath.
Would we, would we have information of how long they had been in the village, like, you know, like a record of how long, textile or whatever the name of the business was?
Yeah, I think they have all that, in fact, he, he had that. This, this guy from the Attorney General's office had the history, he had all of the names, he had the dates. He had a lot of information. And that's when he said, I need a better picture. So, he has that now, we'll see where it goes. I think there might be deeper pockets at that gas company than the Village of Champlain.
I'm sure there's a story that goes much farther over our heads, but it would be nice not to, I mean, not even nice, but vital that we aren't responsible for paying that.
Well, we shouldn't be because we definitely were not informed about that at all. There was never any talk of repayment.
Well, I mean, it's, I don't understand how the village would be responsible if there's a, anyway.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree.
We were told we needed to pay for the, um, electricity, which was supposed to be very costly once they moved out, but.
And we paid for the original testing.
Yeah.
And that was supposed to be it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's see here, um, Water Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator advertisement, I just want you to know that, um, it has been put in the Sun Community News going into the Press Republican tomorrow or Wednesday, tomorrow. Um, indeed.com, it will be going into Monster. It's Zip Recruiter, I think is the one that the Sun also uses, and then it's listed on the county website under Civil Service. Uh, so we're advertising as best we can, which actually is rather costly, and I think so far, we've gotten five applications. And that's all I can really say about it. I guess I will just say that I think it's going to be a challenge. But we'll see what else we get. Just to keep you updated. Alright, so the Restore New York Letter of Intent, this, this is, this is a serious conversation. I brought this up at our quick meeting the end of the day. That letter of intent is due on the eleventh. And then there's a second round that you can, um, apply for in the fall. I'm sure that I can get it done, however, it still involves taking control of that building downtown. And I don't know how the board feels about that, because if we do get control from that owner, then it's ours, and then in order to remove it, that's on our dime, dollar. If we don't get the grant, it's our building. So I do not know what you want to do. I don't really want to send in a letter of intent and then have them say, "Well, you don't have control of the building, so no."
Which building is it?
The, um, one on the...
The Burke one.
The Burke one on the corner by the bridge.
Right in the corner?
Well, yeah, it's setting just a little bit, yeah.
The Burke one?
No.
Oh.
The one that's falling, fall apart, kinda.
When, when you turn to go across the bridge, it's right there on your left.
The one with the tin flying all over the place.
And all the grass growing.
Very sad that we can't force him to do something.
Yeah, we had the...
And it would be sad if we took control and don't get anything, and then it's our problem.
And is it the whole building to the little shop?
Yes.
Yes, the whole, large area.
And it's too bad, we probably would have had better luck and more progress if this gentleman lived in the States.
Yeah. I will say, not to influence you at all, but, um, I was talking to someone who just purchased and is removing a different building downtown, and he did ask me about that building across the street, as if he was somewhat interested in removing it and then trying to sell the land. A private citizen doing that is much better than us. But I need to know if you want me to send in the Restore New York Letter of Intent.
Now, if we send that letter, do we, can we back out of it?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I mean, we, we could, but we're supposed to show that we have control of the property. I don't know how I would do that in that letter.
Right.
Gina, did you have any luck speaking with the gentleman's son?
No, I have, well, yeah, no, I have not.
So you haven't spoken with him?
I have not spoken to him. Partially because I'm not completely sure what you want me to do, and I don't want to go too far into it and then say, "Oh, we changed our minds."
So control is in the home that area? And that has to be in the letter by Thursday.
Yeah, or I can do the second round in the fall. It'll be more competitive later, I was told.
Gotcha.
But it would give us more time.
But we don't really want control of the building if we don't get any funding.
We're not going to get anything, Jeff.
That's the catch.
You can't get funding if you don't have control of the building, so it's kinda like a dog chasing his tail.
Then if you get that building and you can't, don't get any funding, then we're up... 'Cause I remember when Pamplon, when we removed that building. And we can't put it on taxes, so we can't collect anything.
And that building had to come down as a, that was an emergency.
Yep, yep.
But the county has already walked away from this other building, so there's no way, even if that was a danger, that they would let us share that, I don't think. Because they rejected it.
Ballpark figure of what it would cost us?
Well, the burned building across the street, which is wood, not brick, we got a, a low bid probably two or three years ago for thirty-five thousand.
To remove it?
To remove it. So I'm saying... Fifty, sixty?
To remove the Burke building? Oh.
Oh, no, I'd go, I'd go much higher than that. I would definitely.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking like two-hundred thousand.
Like I said, I remember Pamplon, we had to do that one, that was...
I bet you wouldn't, wouldn't remove that building for less than two-hundred thousand.
How old is it?
The building?
Older than that.
Probably the late eighteen hundreds, yeah.
Probably. When our place burned down up the street, on Oak Street.
Yeah.
Because just of the date of the home, um, it's automatically certified as, as, and asbestos home by the state, just because of how old it is, whether or not there's proof of it being there or not. They just classify it as that, so that probably is gonna fall under that timeline. I think it's like eighteen ninety or something of that sort.
Yeah, alright.
So...
So that's probably tripling the price.
Well, I mean, it's, if you said it's brick, I would say, I, I just, if it was a regular home, probably at least sixty, seventy, I would say.
I would say over a hundred, to really, that's what I would say.
Okay, well, there you go.
And I would, I, I would, I would think, my guess would be closer to two. Because if they do DMAs having asbestos, now you have to do an asbestos abatement, which now you need to get in a, somebody who's certified to do that, and that's not going to be cheap.
I don't know when, or when, um, the person took down the first one, they didn't take the second one too.
Well, yeah, I mean, so if this person is trying to get it off their hands, could we, you know, broker some sort of middleman trade where someone will be willing to, to do the asbestos protocol and be able to do it and then take ownership for it and then go from there?
Well, the person that owns that per, building also owns another property in the village, which maybe he's keeping that same property, because then now he has an address in the States.
Yeah.
You know, thing is, the person is, is in Canada, that's the only problem.
If a private citizen buys that property that we're talking about, they don't have the same rules and regulations removing it that we as a village do.
I'm sure it's on board.
So it would be to our advantage if someone would just buy it, not us.
Exactly.
Right.
Anyway.
As, as much as I hate to say this, because I, it's such a nice work of downtown, especially with the work that you're doing at the drugstore and, you know, now that other property is going to be torn down. I just don't think that the village can take on that kind of liability right now. And take on the gamble of, of going ahead and saying, "Okay, we'll see." And that would be if he even wanted to turn the property over to us, which...
Right.
I don't see that happening. I mean, he didn't take a FEMA buyout.
Right.
We've done everything in our power to try to get that building taken down. I don't even know that if he said, "Look, we'll, we'll take the building off your hands," I don't know that he would.
How's everyone else feel?
Well, I don't want to have responsibilities if, if we didn't get the grant to, to take it down. We don't have the money.
We can't do that.
No. I mean, would it be a great thing for the village to have it down? Absolutely, but...
Well, I, I agree with you.
Does he get that building insured?
No.
No?
I'm sure not.
So if it fell down, what would happen?
Well, technically, I mean, I suppose he is the one who's responsible, but he has not been responsible for anything.
Unfortunately.
Because structurally, is it, is it even sound?
I don't think so.
Does the tin flying off the roof at the office?
And I'm sure there's all kinds of...
Cracks down the side of it.
Vermin in it.
Oh, jeez. Think of what's living in there.
How, how does the code enforcement work for a property that there's nobody living in it, then code doesn't apply?
He had to board it up, and which he did, that nothing could get in it.
Now there was a fence around, now there's no fence.
That was because the village was paying for that.
We were paying for that.
I don't know, two thousand a year for that fence for years.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, I mean, I hasten to even make this suggestion, but, you know, can we look at code enforcement of, of changing or, um, changing code enforcement, I, can you even do that to make it a little bit more specific in some areas? So, you know, if there's tin flying off roofs, then maybe that's a thousand dollars.
He gets letters, but he...
There's a whole file in there of letters.
There has to, he's probably got a binder going, but because he's not in the States...
He'll call his handyman here, that's how they got the boarded up, or he'll call him and, because he's got the thing with the roof, the tin, somebody will go down there and look at it or kinda fix whatever they're complaining about or not right, and that's it. Doing the necessities is...
But the tin is still floating around.
I know, I know.
Can we change the standard of necessity is what I'm saying.
Now he can come across the border, maybe it's time to really try to...
I think it's a good conversation to have with Chris Mottaw.
You know, what's, what's this, or, I mean, even if we, you know, it doesn't even have to be money, you know, maybe we can just, you know, he surrenders equity every time he doesn't, you know, every time he doesn't fix a tarp or he doesn't fix a this or that, you only lose one percent, and then it starts, oh, I, I don't know what it means. We don't want to own it, we don't want to own it, that's actually not it, but...
And he does, and he pays nothing.
But if he's, if he's, if...
He doesn't pay taxes.
What's going on here? Why, why is, why is this?
Because the county took it first, and then they gave it back to him. So once they gave it back to him, it came off the tax roll, it came off the water and sewer, and he pays nothing, so he has nothing to lose.
So it's essentially a zombie property, basically, they don't want to have to deal with it.
Because they were gonna sell it at auction.
And they refused.
And they refused.
And they had to resolution.
They weren't gonna get...
They weren't gonna give anything for it.
So it wasn't worth even taking it, so he didn't pay the taxes.
So he didn't pay his taxes and the property got given back to him.
And now there's no taxes on it?
It went off the tax rolls.
No, it went off the tax roll, it went off water and sewer, he pays nothing.
He pays nothing.
Is this even legal?
It's a problem.
Yeah, there was something very wrong with that.
Yeah, it was the county that did it, you know.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
And they don't want it.
They didn't want responsibility.
And they don't want it.
Yeah.
Well, I can't blame them, no.
Because they would have had to take it down, because it's, it's just not...
It's unsafe.
And we can't afford to do it.
And that's why we were, that's why we had the fence, that was when Greg was mayor, and they decided that they were gonna put the fence around it, because if anything fell on the sidewalk or somebody got hurt, it was the village's liability, but then we found out different, so it was like a thousand dollars a mo, a year that we were paying for that, and so we just decided to take it down and we didn't have to pay anymore.
We did on him.
Exactly.
Where's the other place? No, I mean, I'm not trying to wish on fear, but... Okay.
The house.
The brick house.
The brick house, plus he also owns a lot up on the top of Church Street.
The huge place right here in the corner?
No, on the other bridge.
On the other bridge.
Other bridge going up, right village on the right-hand side.
Which is not occupied yet either, so...
On the right-hand side before you go across the bridge.
I don't know how you could occupy that.
That building has been vacant for...
Years.
A long time, decades.
So, so, yeah, so the bottom line is, um, I'm not doing the letter of intent, right?
Right.
Alright, alright, um, I don't know, I'll just keep trying to figure out a way to, to make that move.
We're doing, never mind.
No, no, it's fine, Joe, we're going.
No, I was just gonna ask the, the addresses. What, what are the status of these properties, you know, I, I've essentially, what's the definition of a zombie property?
It doesn't fit, it doesn't work for that, that property, it doesn't work for this other one. Believe me, I've tried everything, and then I thought it was going to work for the land bank, which we're trying to get going, and then the pandemic happened and then that, the land bank idea stopped.
Is it in a flood zone?
Yes.
Can we reach out FEMA and say, "Hey, this is a danger, you know, we have a dangerous property."
He refused the buyout.
He refused the buyout. And he kept taking it.
Actually, there was another building on the other side of it, as you come off the bridge. There was actually two brick buildings. Took the buyout for one and did not take the buyout for the third.
So, so let me get this straight, so they offered to, to, to buy the building from him, to take the asset off his hands, and he said no?
But it wasn't in a despair as it is now.
Right.
Yeah, so essentially, I mean, he's still looking at it as an investment, and of course, why would you not? When you don't pay any, he, he, he's, he's got no responsibility. He owns the place, he lets it fall apart, I, I, this is just me, but I feel like we have to find, uh,
Some way to get it.
Look at the code, and if the code isn't enforceable and he's not meeting the standards, then maybe we need to up the standards, uh, because... I don't know, that just, it seems like the village is being taken advantage of.
Well, yeah, but...
But would he be grandfathered?
Well, I, I, I don't know, we can't...
With prior code, 'cause we've been trying to do something with that property for so long?
We've had thirty...
We could pull the file out and show you, I mean, I'm not trying to be like a negative Nellie here, but, I mean, we have had the lawyers and we've had the county and we've had, you know...
We've spent a lot of money on this property.
Yeah, and basically...
And can't do anything.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do anything. And it's not right, but I don't know.
Who can? Can anyone? Can anyone do anything?
A, a private citizen could. Someone would buy it and, and remove it and then offer it for resale, and there's even somebody who might be interested in it.
Yeah, that's the sad part, is there is somebody who's interested.
Yeah, but doesn't want the cost of the removal.
That's, that's the big issue, is the cost of the removal.
Yeah, and we really cannot afford to do that ourselves.
It's such a big building.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know how it works, but can we just, uh, you know, somehow make an advertisement or, or find some, could we broker a deal between someone who would be willing to take it down and the, the owner of the property, like, we, I don't, 'cause that would be favoritism.
Yeah, we can't do it, we can't do it in these areas, it's private property. The village doesn't own it.
And unfortunately, I...
I know what you're gonna say. Alright, um, masking guidelines, the only reason I brought this up is we did have several COVID cases here. Everyone's following the guidelines as, as they need to, but it came up, um, do we need any kind of masking guidelines ourselves? I reached out to the town of Plattsburgh, I think, did I give you a copy of that or not?
No.
Oh, I gave you a copy.
I gave you a copy and I didn't give anyone else a copy, I'm sorry. I'm not, I, I, I'm not really advocating a, a whole bunch of more guidelines and restrictions, but my concern that I shared with the DPW group is that I think when they travel in the trucks together, maybe they should be wearing masks. They're so clueless.
No.
So out of the five, three, out of the five, three got COVID, out of the six, three got COVID.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wondered if you had any input on, on recommendations for them. They traveled pretty quickly through. And when they came back, they masked for five days. And, uh, most of the time they're working outside, I don't really have a concern about that. I do when they travel together in the trucks, I just wonder...
They're in close quarters in the world too, when they're at, when they're having their lunch.
Yeah.
So it was Wednesday some, they all went home, Thursday morning we were called, one had it, and then Thursday night, the rest of them went home and we were called Friday and said, "Somebody else had it." And then everybody else came back to work Monday, and then Monday night, we were told, "Whoops, I passed, I have COVID."
And we all have lives, so we're all out, you know, in, in, in our worlds, or it's not, I'm not saying they're necessarily gonna get it from, from a coworker, but if they do get it, it's just...
It's passed very easy.
It's passed very easily and...
By the time they, it spreads, you don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna get it.
You've got it, you've already spread it.
Yeah, it's already, you're already exposed before even know someone has it.
Yeah, so my recommendation to them was just, because they travel together in the trucks, then maybe they should be masking when they're just in the trucks.
Are they, are they asking? Have they said anything yet?
Um, they, there, there, there were, there was one person who had concerns and there was a lot of grumbling about any kind of, of recommendations. I'm just bringing it up to the board because I just want your input, and if your input is, you know, um, you know, let them figure it out on their own, that's absolutely fine.
I mean, if they're eating lunch together, they can do the distance rule.
Right, I mean, they can't, can't have it on when they're eating.
Yeah.
Right, and that room is not very good.
No.
And then if you tell them, "Well, you're kind of in close quarters in a vehicle, you need to wear masks," then they're gonna say, "Well, when you and Mary sit close to each other in the office, they should be wearing the masks as well."
You're six feet apart.
Except that they...
I said that corner, she said...
You know, they are pretty, they are pretty hard.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yes, yes, I know, I know.
I'm taking over Amy's role.
Yeah.
I know, I totally agree. But during all this time, um, we actually were wearing our mask in here because... But during all this time, um, we actually were wearing our mask in here because he just.
Well, because you guys, we coworkers, but someone else came in, they could be.
Yeah, they, yeah, we, we didn't know, I mean.
Right.
And everyone tested every day. I just feel if, if it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, okay?
I would say.
If you feel you should, then.
Yeah.
Just be aware that it's going around. It's going around, just like the flu.
Yup.
And if you feel more comfortable wearing it, wear it.
Go for it, yeah.
Individual decision.
And I would say, if, if you don't wanna have lunch with the crew inside, you wanna go outside, you wanna go somewhere for lunch, and, you know, we should, we should support it, or whatever you, whatever, whatever combinations you, I mean, to, to
Yeah.
a reasonable extent, but.
Guidelines at the health department right now, anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Discretion, you have a discretion.
Yep, individual discretion. Um, let's see, I was going to mention that poutine challenge again, but I think I explained that well enough. Uh, old business, uh, dog control, um, I can say that I did talk to the dog control officer at length today, um, that the judge has dealt with two of the cases in the village, there's another concern right now that's being dealt with. I do feel like the dog control officer's really staying on top of things. Uh, but I would tell you and the public that you really need to go through the channels. So, I know when you see something with an animal, and it's, it's bad, the first thing is to put it on social media, but please, call the dog control officer, or call a state trooper.
Is the phone number for the dog control officer, do you have it?
It's on the town website.
Yeah, it's on the town website.
It's on our website too.
Okay, yeah, please go through those channels, because they're working, and it doesn't help them to have a ton of calls coming in about, I heard this, or I read it on Facebook. If, we really have to go through the channels, because it's working. I emphasize that to everyone. Uh, let's see, we did the water tank maintenance contract, the only other thing is the age-friendly community application, which is another thing that I just have to read, just a second here. Is that the resolution?
Yeah.
All right, so this is another resolution. To seek membership in the AARP network of age-friendly communities. Whereas the health and safety of residents of all ages is of highest concern to the citizens of the Village of Champlain. And whereas, as the population ages and people stay healthy and active longer, communities must adapt. And whereas planning processes including community revitalization and economic development plans should include the needs of all people regardless of age, income, physical ability, race, and other factors of older adults. And whereas, community decisions on land use, housing, and transportation should be consistent with comprehensive plans that have been developed with public input. And whereas, members of the AARP net, network of age-friendly communities become part of the global network of communities that are committed to giving their older residents the opportunity to live rewarding, productive, and safe lives. And whereas, membership in the network of age-friendly communities includes access to financial assistance and technical experience, expertise. And now, therefore be it resolved, that in order to ensure the Village of Champlain is a well-designed, livable community that promotes health and sustained economic growth for all, for residents of all ages, the Village of Champlain supports the planning process and requests participation in the network of age-friendly communities. We have a motion to accept. And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, I'll send this in this week, and with the application, and I'll, I'll let you know. Um, that's all I have, does anyone else have anything?
Sammy's Lunchbox will be here for the concert on Wednesday.
Oh, good.
I'm working on the nineteenth, so far there's a lot of no's.
Okay, uh, they will bring a generator?
Say nothing, say anything, so, I'll ask.
Yeah, because we don't, we, I don't think we, we don't have enough power to, uh, to do that. Okay, so please come to the concert, it should be really great, weather looks like it's gonna be good.
Yes, and thank you to Mr. Jingling for stepping in for the last concert on court notice.
Ah, yes, yes.
He was, yeah, and he stayed to the whole thing, which I didn't think he was going to, so, that was great.
Yeah, he did. Hope he did okay.
I think so, enjoy it.
Oh, yeah, I think he did, he's at one point, I don't know where he, yeah, he's doing okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, if there's no other business, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Can I just?
Oh, yes.
Um, give you an update on the bridge?
Yeah.
So, we made a joint call to the sheriff's office, and, um, very nice officer that we spoke with, and said that we need to go into the office and make a statement in the, in the office. Um, but he asked, when we called, can, can you please not come in this week, because it is the fair? And I didn't even give that a thought, but he's like, um, you know, after that would be wonderful, please come in and we'll have a sit down and go over everything. Um, and we just haven't gotten a chance to get back to it yet, because we've been out, and then we're, we're gonna be out again. And we asked, is this gonna be a problem, because it's been a while, and he said, no, not at all.
Okay, great.
So, um, so we're still working on that.
Thank you for coming up with that.
Cause I'm just still really.
Is that the graffiti?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
It's really hit a, it's really hit a raw spot with me, I just.
Which bridge?
The, the straight line.
Um, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems to be a hot spot of nefarious deeds.
Yeah, I must drive through there fifty times a day looking. Things were not.
So, we will, we will get back to it.